La Jolla City Council of June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is now six P M if we would all stand for our invocation. Heavenly Father, we gather today with heavy hearts, still reeling from the tragedies that have struck our community. Guide us as the families work towards healing and our community goes towards unity and positive positivity. Grant us wisdom and courage to build a brighter future, honor the memories of those we lost. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If you'll stand, stay standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. I was gonna say, malling Mrs., go ahead, roll call. Whoever you are.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez. Stoker.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochja.
Here.
Tantoya.
Here.
Rickoff.
Here.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
And I'll take your mics on.
It doesn't turn on.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
And I'll second again.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Jeremiah? And pass it unanimously. Okay, before we get to citizens' participations, I do have some people that are gonna share with us some information. And the first one has, what do you call a dress rehearsal tonight? So you need to come up right away. Mister Noah Nunez Rebel to the microphone.
Okay, so, hi, my name is Noah and I'm here to represent the La Jolla Children's Theater. So we have an upcoming production of The Lightning Thief Percy Jackson. And you can get tickets from the door or from any of the actors in the show. These are what the tickets look like. Tickets are ten dollars and it's a really fun thing to go see with your family or your friends. And if you have a niece, a nephew, or a sibling, a cousin in it, you can get tickets from them. It's a really great opportunity and I think that people will enjoy it.
I think I'm doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
What, what is the production names again?
The production is Percy Jackson and the Lightning Thief.
And it starts tomorrow, am I right?
We open tomorrow and we will continue every day until Saturday, the twenty-second.
What's the time?
Doors open at six thirty and the show starts at seven. So you have time to use the restroom or go to get popcorn or drink at the concession stand.
How long have you been doing it, Noah?
I've been going since I was about nine years old to about twenty fifteen, I think is when I started. When I started off doing The Wizard of Oz and now I'm going into my last year, so.
And what role do you have in this one?
I play the role of Percy Jackson. Thank you.
So, you know, make sure everyone goes out and catches Noah and the cast. Anything else you wanna add, Noah?
Um, I think it's a fun show and I really hope that you all come to see it.
I look forward to it. Does anyone have questions for Noah?
Is it just a once, one show a year?
Um, so Children's Theater is, um, every summer. She puts on a show every summer and we usually have four show dates, but today, not today, this year she added on a fifth. So if you couldn't make the four, you can also go.
Tomorrow. So how do you try out if you're a child?
If you're a kid, um, so on the Facebook page, she posts, um, the information about auditions and, um, show dates and all that type of stuff. And she'll also email out an audition form that you can print out and fill out manually or you can fill out an audition form at the audition.
Who's she?
Um, Kelly Jo Smith.
Okay.
I don't even know how long you guys have been doing that.
This is, uh, the twenty-fifth anniversary of Children's Theater.
Yeah, the Facebook page is Children's Theater of La Jolla. So they're pretty prolific about posting notices and everything and the show information, so.
And then we also on Facebook page, Kelly Jo will take pictures of us during our practices. So if you have a kid in it, you can get pictures of them rehearsing.
Thank you, Noah. Good luck. Break a leg.
Thank you. Thanks, Noah.
Thank you.
Noah view? Like Noah? Yeah. Double entendre. All right, Mister Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm Toby Tyler and I'm here representing the Arkansas Valley Ham Radio Club. It's mostly out in Lamar, but we've actually expanded quite a bit down here. So we have about as many members here in La Jolla as they do in Lamar now. This weekend, we're doing a demonstration. It's a demonstration that happens once a year. It's about fifty thousand ham radio operators in North America are getting together in parks all over the country. And we're gonna be showing off what you can do with just a little radio and a wire. You could talk worldwide. And so anybody who's interested, it's open to the public. It's gonna be at the La Jolla City Park, Ponceide Gazoo from twelfth noon until eight. Anybody can come, can learn what they wanna do. A change that we did this year, we're having it here in La Jolla, previously we had it in Lamar. But we're getting a lot more members out here that are interested, that know nothing about radio. And then with what happened in Rocky Ford with that child and then what happened just recently, we've kind of decided that we were going to try to fund a, a local GMRS public, uh, radio that's gonna be free for the public. We're trying to raise enough money to do it. We've raised quite a bit already, we're just about there. And what it's gonna be, it's gonna be up at the Boys Ranch, it's always already been approved by the city. They're gonna provide the power, we're gonna provide everything else. And it costs about three thousand bucks and the Sheriff's Department's gonna go in with us. And it's gonna be free for anyone. All you have to do is have a radio, you can use it for emergencies, you can use it for fun. It's a good way to, um, um, to get everybody, like, if you wanted to volunteer during one of these searches, it gives us a way to communicate altogether without having to tie up fire department, police department, Sheriff's Department radios, we can all communicate that way. And it works really, really well. It can also be taken, uh, so the, so the range is gonna be basically east past Los Anamis, west probably Manzanola Fowler, north Spotty to Eads and south to the Canyons. It can be taken mobile and the Sheriff's Department has a mobile, um, tilt up. We're gonna be doing some work on that. And so if there's an emergency out south in the Canyons, it can actually be taken and put into use. Priorities will be emergencies, of course, but we want everybody to be comfortable using the radio. So it is free if you use under five watts, five watts and under, you don't need a license. If you use something over five watts, the license is thirty-five dollars, covers your whole family. You don't need to take a test and the license is good for ten years. And so, um, there is a, um, what's called the Lamar Area Ham Radio Club. If you guys are interested, please stop by the Ponceide Gazoo on Saturday from noon to eight. We'd love to show you what we can do with just a little tiny wire and a little wet radio. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out, uh, Toby Tyler on our Facebook. We'd love to talk with you guys. It's a, it's a really easy thing. You do need a license for ham radio. But you do have to take a test and it's not an easy task, but it's not that difficult either. But, um.
What is this, GMRS?
Sorry, it's the, um, it's, I've been using the abbreviation so long. It's, I think it's called the General Radio Mobile, it's a mobile radio service. It's, you can buy the radios typically, you can buy the cheap, cheap radios over at Walmart. They're probably like twenty bucks or something like that. You can buy a better quality radio, uh, for that on, on Amazon for about the same price. You do have to program it. I do program them for free. So if you get something you don't know how to program, you just contact one of us in the radio club and we'll program it for you for free. It's usually a pretty easy process, but, but sometimes it's not as easy for, oh. The older you get, the more difficult that I get, I hear, you know? But it is, it's a, it's a good thing. You can take one radio that cannot talk from a very far distance and when you add this repeater in, you can basically talk from one side of our valley to the other. And when you're doing a search, it really comes in handy.
Do you guys have your own repeater?
We do. We actually have two ham radio repeaters here. Pueblo is in the process of redoing one and gonna link it to Pueblo, which will link up to other ham radio stations across the front range. And Lamar's gonna be redoing one, it's gonna be linking down to Lamar and that whole section. So it will actually open up the valley. That's ham radio. The GMRS part, we're gonna keep it local because when it comes to an emergency, it's pretty much local. And that's what we really wanted to do it, uh, we wanted to raise the money for something like that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Toby. Good job. Hope to see you Saturday.
Toby, can you send me your file?
Mrs. Todd, or Miss Todd, was that? Miss Todd.
No.
Good evening, council. First off, I'd like to thank you all for your service and dedication to our community. There's a lot of things that go on in our town that a lot of people don't know about. And I always say, if you don't think there's anything going on in La Jolla, you're not paying attention because there's a lot of us who do a lot of work around the community to make sure that there's things going on. My name's Christina Tazi, I'm president of the La Jolla Chamber of Commerce. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you guys about some upcoming chamber events. We are in our busy time for the chamber and all of our events are open to the public and we'd love to see as many faces as possible. Our next upcoming event is our monthly Zoom meeting. So this happens, it's called our BLT, our Business Lunch Talk. This is the last Thursday of every month. Um, this is coming up next week on June, June twenty-seventh. Uh, and if anybody would like to be added to the email to get the Zoom link, you can reach out to info@laJollaChamber.com. This is a really good opportunity to learn about different organizations around the city and what they're doing. We hear from the hospital, the college, uh, city council, the school district, and any other entity that likes to, that would like to share what, what's going on. Following that, we have the Wet Dry Parade on Thursday, July fourth. This is a very well-attended event and we thank the city for their partnership in getting the roads closed and the police department for leading us and all of that. So there is no sign up required for this parade, but we do ask that parade participants check in at Second and Santa Fe. Uh, as, as always, this, the parade follows east from Second and Santa Fe to Colorado. This is gonna be our dry zone, so we ask that people don't spray any of the spectators on the sides. It then proceeds south on Colorado to Fifth Street, west on Fifth Street to Santa Fe, back north on Santa Fe to Second Street, and it follows that route twice. After the parade, we encourage the community to support the Fourth of July celebration that's happening at the park. This year is hosted by Ark Valley Entertainment, so, um, it should be a fun day in La Jolla.
Any rules?
Any rule, uh, no water balloons, absolutely no water balloons. We will be monitoring that a little closer this year. Last year, um, we had an issue with that, uh, there were some injuries and damage reported. So we wanna make sure that everybody knows that no water balloons are allowed and they will be asked to leave if, if we do find them. Thursday, July twenty-fifth, we have our annual in-person Business Lunch Talk and we are working the details out right now. Uh, this is a great event that Julie Worley has really been involved in and we are excited to see everybody in person in July. Following that, in August, we have Tuesday, August sixth, is gonna be our very important business event or the La Jolla Chamber Vibe. Uh, I will actually be the presenter for the August event. This will be held at the Otero College Student Center in Conference Room One Twenty. TBK Bank is actually sponsoring this event, so there's gonna be no cost to, um, attend. We'll start sign up on Monday, June twenty-fourth and it's limited to the first twenty-five participants and lunch is included in this event. So it'll be, um, eleven A M to one P M. And the topics will be small business marketing and introduction to Canada. So that's a really great tool for a lot of small businesses to start marketing their companies and I'm excited to put that on. Um, our next BLT after that will be Thursday, uh, August twenty-ninth, eleven forty-five. Again, that one will be on Zoom. And our big event, our headlining event of the year is Early Settlers Day, Saturday, September seventh. This will be held downtown and in City Park. We are very excited for this year's celebration and appreciate the continued partnership and support of the city of La Jolla. I know the engineering department, streets department, electric department, you name it, everybody's involved and we definitely appreciate it. This is longstanding event, it was actually brought to La Jolla in nineteen fourteen, I believe, so we're at ninety years. Or nineteen, no, it's, it's ninety years, I know that, so I'm, I'm thirty, thirty, nineteen thirty-four, I apologize. This year's theme is Small Town Big Dreams. We are honoring the big dreams realized from past to present and the big dreams to be fulfilled in the future. Vendor registration is now available and can be found on the Chamber Facebook page or by contacting info@laJollaChamber.com. We are currently looking for sponsors and those range from a hundred dollars up to five thousand dollars. So we have kind of something that will fit the bill for anybody if they'd like to support this event. Um, it does take a lot of money to put this on, um, and so any support we can get from the community would be great. Excuse me. Uh, we, I will be sending out sponsorship information, it'll be sent via email and posted on our Facebook page this Friday. Our parade entry sign up will be available mid-July. Again, the theme is gonna be Small Town Big Dreams. Uh, before the parade, we're gonna have a community breakfast prepared by Sweet Inspirations for the first hundred and fifty attendees. This will be at the Santa Fe Plaza, starting at eight A M. This will include a trike race, um, on Santa Fe in front of the La Jolla Chamber of Commerce, Commerce Office and then, uh, which is sponsored by the Arkansas Valley Casa Group. And then we'll also have the Battle of the Banks chalk drawing contest again, which is also sponsored by TBK Bank. The parade starts at ten A M and we encourage all downtown businesses to be open for paradegoers that morning. The parade will start at Fifth and Santa Fe, head north to Second Street, proceed east to Colorado and then south on Colorado where it will end at night. We have a variety of vendors and activities in the park, including an antique car show, the annual fishing derby, senior lunch, which is sponsored by the AIS Medicare. Uh, last year Villagin participated as well as Grady's Farmers Market and Hammigan's Farmers Market. They usually donate, um, the food and the melons and everything to honor our seniors, so they get a free lunch that day. Um, we have a three-on-three basketball tournament that is going to be hosted by the La Jolla Parks and Rec Department, skateboard competition, and a lot of other events. Our main stage entertainment will run from noon until four P M. Um, and new this year will be the Otero Family, uh, Otero College Family Fun Zone. So they're gonna have a variety of different, uh, family-friendly activities and yard games. We also wanna thank Otero Athletics because they're a big supporter. They bring all the tables and chairs, they bring the stage from Otero. All of those athletes work, work hard that morning and, and then the following morning to get everything picked up. So, uh, our partnership with Otero is one that's also very, very valued. Evening bands will kick off at five P M in the Beer Garden, which will again be at the tennis courts in City Park. We are very thrilled to have, again, our local favorite band, The Bluntful, and they will be performing from five P M until seven P M. And followed by the Williams Brothers Band. So this is kind of an announcement, we haven't announced our band yet, but Williams Brothers Band out of Fruta, Colorado, and one of their members is actually a Fruta Chamber, uh, city council member. So that'll be fun to kind of make, make that relationship with them. So they'll be playing from eight P M to ten P M in the Beer Garden. We look forward to seeing the community out and about for Early Settlers Day and all of our other events coming up. So I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you for all you do.
Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, now we will move on to citizen participation. For anyone that wants to get up and say anything, uh, you have five minutes and you want to give your name and address. And go on once.
You know I got.
I know, I was like.
He's being nice, let somebody else go first.
Yes, yeah.
Go first, yeah. Douglas Golding, thirteen sixteen Lincoln Avenue. Just real quick, I drive around town a lot. The other day I, I hit a pothole that if I'd been going any faster, I think I would've broke the axle. What, I, I haven't seen much in the way of street repair around town. I don't know if we have a schedule or what we're doing on that, but there's a lot of really bad.
We, we are aware of a lot of it. Uh, we did have some projects that the street department was working on that they're wrapping up. With the cuts, and this is not an excuse, I don't want you to take it as an excuse, but with the cuts that were taken from the street department this year, we had to make some adjustments to when things were getting done. We do realize that with the weather and everything, the, uh, potholes are getting worse. So, um, I'll be getting with the city engineer so we can come up with some type of temporary plan and try to, try to start at least working on some.
If we could at least address some of the really, really bad ones, yeah.
And, uh, we, we do realize that that's getting worse. So we will, we'll try to work our hardest to make some adjustments and, and do what we can.
And, and always report those too, because, uh, you know, if you're driving around that, a street that everyone else thinks, oh, someone else said something about it. Uh, we do have a list, but it doesn't mean we have everyone on there, on that list, so. Any other citizen participation? Okay, moving on to city manager search. Uh, they kept it open actually an extra week, that week that I had missed, thank you Lisa for covering. And they got one more candidate who was a local, um, resident from La Jolla, a female. So Larry Gilli, who is with SGR, will be attending CML this week. But he wants to start the interviewing process next week. So I will make sure that we have a nice update on how all that went at our next meeting. But that's where we're at currently with it. So we have eight total candidates for, for the position. Moving on to committee and board reports, any committee and board reports?
Paul's not here.
Paul's on all the committees and. And then we'll move on to interim city manager comments.
Well, thanks for letting me go on vacation, I appreciate it, it was very well relaxing. Just a few things to kind of go over. June twenty-ninth, uh, there'll be a, an event going on in City Park. It's gonna be called this, the AMR, which is American Medical Response Safety Jam. I was involved in this up in Pueblo the first few years that it started going and, uh, they put on this event, kind of just as a big safety event, um, with all kinds of things, um, with giveaways. They're gonna be landing a helicopter in City Park, um, so everybody can come see. They have events, they've got food, they're gonna have vendors, things like that. I know we're gonna be heavily involved with the fire department, we'll have a bunch of the trucks out there. I think the police department's gonna be involved. But, uh, it'll be June twenty-ninth at the City Park and I believe it starts at ten A M, but I'm, I believe that's right, right? Let's, yeah, ten A M and it goes for most of day. So, um, the, the company that's putting it on AMR that's located out of Rocky Ford, they decided they wanted to have it in La Jolla due to the size of the park, the location of the park and being central in the valley. So I was very honored for that and it'll be a great event, so encourage everybody to go. Um, as everybody is aware, the last couple tragic events that we've had in the community the last couple weeks, my hat goes off to all the first responders and other responders that, that, uh, assisted, all the other agencies that came in from the outside that assisted. The work's not done, they're still working hard, but my, I'd like to tip my hat off and say thank you to all of them. As well as all the community or all the departments from the city after the storm on this Friday with the winds and the rains. Uh, we talked briefly this morning, I talked to a couple of my supervisors and they were making sure it was okay. They had their guys go out and pick up tree limbs a little earlier than normal, such as in the parks and the cemetery and things like that, so they weren't laying out all weekend. Cause before it was kind of like, no, don't go out, we can't, you know, no overtime, no, I don't believe in that. I believe we need to get it cleaned up as quickly as possible. One, it doesn't look good, two, it's a, it's a safety hazard. So anyway, they got things picked up, so all the, the departments that went out and worked, uh, water department, or street department, uh, parks department, cemetery, the electric guys, things like that, kept everything running. So, uh, kudos to that and then, um, that's what we got. Things are going good at the swimming pool, big attendance has been going on, very good out there, a lot of parties. And I'm happy to announce that everything's been running pretty smoothly there. That's what we've got so far, Mister Mayor.
Okay, I'd like you to take your city manager hat off and then put the fire hat.
You got it, no problem.
The question I've been getting from everybody is, what are we doing on fireworks?
Okay, fireworks, um, you know, it's too, too late now to put on a fireworks show, we know that. But, uh, with the conditions and everything, we've made the decision to allow fireworks to be sold and to be used in the community safely. Uh, we are in the process of working with the state, uh, fire safety people as well of starting a campaign of, it's called Bucket It. And what it is, is we'll be able to hand out buckets. So after you're done with your Fourth of July fireworks, you put them in there, fill it up with water so it makes sure that it puts them out. So we're kind of getting that community project going on, hopefully get that out here pretty soon. But, uh, just as a reminder, on fireworks, anything that goes in the air and explodes or make noise is illegal in the state of Colorado, not in the city of La Jolla, the state of Colorado. So we know that people are gonna.
Whisker doos, whisker dunks.
Whisker dees and whisker doos, that's right. We all know that people are gonna do what they're gonna do. Please be patient, the law enforcement can only do so much with what they have. But if you are purchasing, remember, anything that goes in the air is illegal. If it does cause a fire, um, you will be held liable if it is connected back to your fireworks. And, uh, that we ask that everybody does it safely, make sure you have a garden hose available, make sure adults are the only ones lighting the, uh, uh, fireworks and not intoxicated adults. So make sure it's safe that way, so.
The other one too is if you have someone that is lighting fireworks that you believe are unsafe or illegal, you have to call and you have to sign a complaint.
Yes, you do.
Uh, we can, we cannot, it, it's hard enough to try and find out where the sound came from.
Right.
Uh, but if, if you're not willing to take that next step, it's hard for us to do anything, uh, from the police department's level. Uh, the other thing on top of that is basically the first time the police show up on Fourth of July, you're getting a warning. If we get, if they get called back again, um, then it's gonna escalate, so. Everyone's getting a warning right away, but don't, don't make them come back.
Yeah, don't make, don't make it happen, just, just be safe, have fun, it's family time, it's fun to celebrate the, uh, you know, our, our United States freedom and everything, but do it safely is what we ask.
And then you just wanna briefly, uh, touch on, the city's never had a fireworks show, right?
Well, we have had one, it's, it's been.
But with us running it?
With the city, the fire department used to shoot all the fireworks shows.
John, John Fisher, wasn't it?
Yeah, John Fisher host company, La Jolla Fire, Rural Fire District.
Yeah.
Um, we, we took care of shooting all the shows. It's very difficult these days because it takes well over a full day to get the show set up to shoot and then that's not running calls in between. So, um, that makes it very difficult. But again, the fundraising is another big step. I have talked with a few people around the community for maybe next year, starting to maybe look at, trying to do a little bit of fundraising, get some money built up. And, um, I do have a couple connections with some fireworks companies that we could maybe wait a little longer to decide if we're gonna have a show, instead of having to make the decision back in January when we get the drought report and everything like that. So hopefully maybe next year. The thing is, with all the buildings being added out to the rodeo grounds, we have to be a certain distance away from things. So it's gonna be hard to find a good place to shoot fireworks safely. So not saying we can't, we're not saying that it's totally off the board for next year, but I am gonna work really hard on trying to get a community show back for us next year.
At one point it was the chamber though that had helped out with the fundraising.
Yes, the chamber did the fundraising the last couple times, yes. And so I'm gonna work with their board this next year, I believe, and, and see what we can do to maybe get that going again and, and, you know, give everybody a fun time for a little bit that evening.
I believe you guys said you were in the talks of a, uh, fireman's calendar or something.
Uh, no, that, that was vetoed out, just so everybody knows. It keeps coming up for some reason, I don't know why, but, um, I've got it hurt, I've, yeah, no, I'm not saying I'm not hurt. But no, that got vetoed.
Maybe they can put it on the ballot.
Maybe they can.
A ballot, yeah.
Can I make the motion?
That's why you got that tan going on.
That's right, I had to get a tan for that.
Yeah.
But that's what I got, Mister Mayor.
Um, I just wanna also thank Brock for stepping in while you were out.
Yeah, for Brock and for Aaron Childers, uh, my deputy chief on the fireside, he stepped up, ran the fireside, ran all the incidents that took place. And then of course Brock running the city and taking care of all his departments, uh, ran very smooth. And to just all the, to all the staff of the city, just doing their job. And that's, that's my push to them is just do your job.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brad? Governing body comments? I always like to look this way first, that doesn't mean you guys have to do. I always like to look this way first. That doesn't mean you guys have to do it. I just like to go that way. Did you do your pump with the?
It's been a little hot, so we'll. We got a few active pounds. I don't have heat stroke. You have Brad can have to. That's right. You don't want that.
Anyone on this one? Did you do award three?
We did do award three. And our next one will be on the 8th, July 8th.
How'd it go?
Good, yeah. We had, we had a couple, a couple of people and a couple phone calls and yeah. It was good.
Where will it be held?
Oh, at the Brick and Tile Park, the gazebo for this away from mosquitoes and bring mosquitoes, right? 6 o'clock, Mason and I will be there or some combination.
That's a great segue for mosquitoes, Brad. Do you want to talk about the truck and how it has to be, you know, certain temperatures?
Yeah, it just can't go out. It just can't go out every day. The temperature has to be right. The wind has to be at a certain amount. If it gets too high, it disperses too fast and the mosquitoes, it doesn't, it's not beneficial. So that's why sometimes we see it go out, some nights we don't because there's, there's, there's a ton of factors that it's got to take into place for it to be able to go out and be efficient. If not, we're just wasting money and just blowing it out there and it's not doing anything good. But they have been monitoring it very, very closely lately.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to mention weeds. You know, I used to, before I was mayor, I used to watch these meetings and Rick Klein used to say weeds, 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 weeds. Like that was his main thing, but with all the moisture we're getting, all the rain we're getting, the weeds are getting really bad. So if you guys don't stay on top of them, it's going to get a lot worse. So make sure that we take care of that as we can on all of our homes. The fountain at the City Park is now working and it looks great.
I'd like to clarify something on that fountain. It's not a brand new fountain. I saw a lot of things out there and some people questioned me about it. It's, it was repaired. Fountain that we've had, it had a mechanical issue, had to be shipped off. Now it's working great. The company did a great job on getting it repaired and I'm glad to see it back. It does look nice and the lights have been working great on it. Just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, so we were waiting almost two months for those parts to come in, yeah.
Yeah, we actually had to ship the whole fountain back to Michigan to get it repaired. But most of it was covered under warranty and then a couple of things we had done to it. But Brock and then took care of it, got it back in the water and it does look great. I do know fishing ponds aren't very good on fountains. I know Brock is looking to hopefully mitigate that problem so we don't have to keep sending them up.
And then the other thing I want to mention is the cemetery crew. They've been getting a lot of grief here the last couple of weeks, but they have been working really hard to try and get that cemetery in the best shape as possible. Without a sprinkler system, it's really hard for us to be able to have the, the type of grass that is going to look great all the time. Not only that, the headstones are in the way of a lot of when the water does go through. So we do have also some great citizens who show up and they do their best to take care of their own little section of the cemetery. We're working on it. We know it's, it's a touchy subject, but those guys are doing a great job. I went out there and I sat with Rick for, you know, about a good 30 minutes. And he's just telling me everything they do on a daily basis. They're not just sitting out there, you know, messing around. They're, they're working hard. They have a lot of newer guys out there too that they're teaching, teaching the skills too. So thank them and all our city crews for all the work that they're doing.
Thanks for covering that.
And La Jolla Rotary Club also went out this last Saturday and helped pick up the branches that were out there and clean up the stones. So that, thank you to that group.
And we did lose a couple of trees out there from the storm. Brock was informing me this morning, we lost a couple of big pine trees and stuff. So luckily there was no damage from them, but we did lose a couple of trees out of that storm, so.
And then the audit, I thought it went really well. I talked to Patrick and Andrew and they were not aware that we had counsel and I think it's you two on CML. Are you on CML?
I am.
Okay. So we're going to do something different with that work session that we were going to have with Patrick and Andrew to when everyone's here to, to be able to do that, so.
I appreciate that. Gary and I went and met with them. It was during that big storm actually. One of them in Rocky Ford, but they were very accessible and I appreciate them. And I appreciate you moving the work session so we can.
So it could be a full, full thing, so.
Yeah.
With that, I think, Aaron, do you have any?
Nothing.
No? Okay. Thank you all for coming out. And we're adjourned.